Good morning. I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, May 19th, and this is a regular board meeting. And the first thing I will ask for is any adjustments to the agenda. Seeing and hearing none, then we'll move on to item two of the agenda, which is public comment. I have one person signed up for comment. If you'll come up to the podium and state your name and where you're from for the record, then you'll have three minutes to address the board. And Lori Wakeman.
Hello. My name is Lori Wakeman. I'm a resident of Acorn Park Street Community in Eugene. We would want to let you know that a public project has been proposed that has a lot of public opposition in our neighborhood. We would like to ask you, the City of Eugene and Lane County, to look at the budget and make sure that the city money is being spent on this project, that the city money on this project couldn't be spent because of the hurt that it would cause on our vulnerable neighborhood. We also have a positive vision for what could be done in our project site to actually help our low-income neighborhood. This is the kind of thing we would like you to prioritize in the city budget. The Housing and the Community Services Agency, known as HACSA, has proposed a housing complex at 14th and Acorn Park Street to offer permanent housing for 54 to 60 male ex-cons who have graduated from the sponsored transition program. This project would also include offices for two full-time parole officers whose normal caseload would result in additional 100 parolees coming through the neighborhood regularly. While we applaud the work that the sponsors does in the community, we contend that the particular project is proposed for the wrong location. While it admirably houses at-risk individuals, it leaves other vulnerable populations in our community to bear the brunt of the risk, a brunt that our neighborhood is not equipped to bear. Instead of shoehorning an especially challenging group plus additional convict services into this very dense area filled with children, imagine developing a community center, a center to promote arts, ecology, that could serve our children after school, investing in the positive potential of Acorn Park families. Rather than allow the city budget to subsidize a well-intentioned but out-of-place project would bring additional complications for traffic, wastewater, emergency services, and overloaded residential projects just a few blocks off of West 11th. Please do what you can to avoid greasing the wheels for yet another burden that Oak Patch and Acorn Park areas cannot bear. And I have a handout of, we have almost 500 petitions signed from the neighborhood and of our proposal that I'd like to give you, if that's okay?
Thank you. If you want to give them to staff, we can make sure they get in our records and get on our website.
That would be great. No, no, we haven't. Okay. Thank you very much, you guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? Then we'll move on to Commissioner's response to public comments and/or other issues and remonstrations. Any comments from Commissioner Stewart?
I just wanted to thank Lori for coming and speaking and giving the petition. I hope that you've made this or will give this presentation to the city. The city's probably the best body that could, you know, look at the requests and petition and the potential for, you know, some other type of assistance building, you know, community building or something. So please make sure that, at least present that viewpoint to the city. Thanks.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for coming this morning and taking the time to speak to the board. I do want to comment on one other issue. I thought it was very interesting, the two largest newspapers in the state editorials basically said the same thing, and that was the Register-Guard editorial set a swap on transportation, and they actually suggested to either rescind or defer the low-carbon fuel standards and instead pass a transportation package. And the following day, the Oregonian, same thing. In fact, their title was Governor Kate Brown's Clean Fuels Albatross, and the same thing. They actually asked the legislature to either defer or rescind the low-carbon fuel standard bill and instead focus on a transportation package. That actually, a transportation package would be a positive effect for all Oregonians and not a small group, basically up in the Portland mental area. So I thought that was very interesting that both editorial boards, the two largest newspapers, basically said the same thing. Rescind the low-carbon fuel standards and instead focus on a full transportation package that will benefit all Oregonians. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a couple of quick comments, but I want to start out with the first one, which is that Commissioner Farr is excused today, and that's why we only see four of us up here. And tagging on to the Register-Guard's editorials, I just want to appreciate Register-Guard for their editorial on Sunday concerning House Bill 3194 and adequate funding for post-prison and post-conviction services as well as prevention services and victim services, and how the state changed the rules as far as early release goes, so we have to deal with a larger population as a county, yet they're kind of going backwards on their commitment to funding those services and how important that is for Lane County. And kind of continuing to focus on Salem, there's an article this morning about Eugene preparing to implement a local sick leave ordinance, and it appears to me that I think the state is still working on that, although during Agenda Team request, I think I'm going to talk to the board about possibly looking at what action the county may have to take should the state fail to act and preempt local labor law. So we'll talk about that later. Also like to note for folks, because it won't come up in public as we pass our consent agenda as a single vote, but there's an item in there requesting the state legislature to extend the statute of limitations on rate to 20 years. And that's part of our consent calendar, is a letter making that request to the legislature. So in addition, a future agenda item that's coming back to us probably in our first meeting in June, because our next meeting's then, is going to be an item concerning Senate Bill 941 and looking towards what action the county can take in response to the passage and signing of that bill. And finally, I'd like to, you know, today's election day, and I'd like to spend a moment to address our election and the vehicle registration fee, just to say that, you know, I'll be disappointed if we fail to pass the fee, because I feel it's a failure on my part to communicate to the folks of Lane County the need for this bridge, this Band-Aid, to try and keep our roads in good, safe condition until we can get some kind of permanent funding out of Salem or out of Washington DC and dealing with our forest issues. If we win, I'm not going to celebrate, because I'm having to ask our local voters to support that bridge and come out of their pockets to do something that Salem and DC should be doing for us. So, you know, I don't believe that at 8:00 when the polls close and the results start coming out, that anyone up on this board or in the county is going to be celebrating one way or the other. It's just a tough situation that the failures of both Washington DC to deal with forest policy and transportation policy, and Salem to deal with transportation policy, that we're having to deal with on a local level and take local control over, that's what we're looking at tonight. And I just want people to know that there's not going to be, you know, some party somewhere watching the results come in. I'll probably be at home checking my computer and possibly responding to the press, but it will not be an occasion for me to celebrate or have a glass of wine if we win, and it's not going to be an occasion for us to, you know, celebrate if we lose, because it means that our roads are going to start deteriorating. So it's an unfortunate situation we find ourselves in, having to ask for local support of something that traditionally has been supported by state and federal funds. So any other comments or remonstrance from the board? Commissioner Sorensen.
I just wanted to say that one of the interesting things about this election is going to be the results of the election compared against the information that the board has been receiving over maybe the past two years. And that is that according to the, you know, I will just say, according to my version of what the board has been receiving, we've gotten a lot of information about the public's attitude towards roads and road funding, and how much money it costs to maintain roads, and the willingness of people to accept local fees in return for better roads. And the legislature's option given to the larger counties in the state for the counties to impose a up to $43 fee on motor vehicle owners meant that some counties would use that power and impose those fees, and Multnomah County, their board voted in a fee. I think it was actually the full fee, $43.
Actually, I think it's 19.
Oh, 19, okay, a lower amount. And so other boards have taken different approaches, and I think ours has been kind of prudent to look at this over a long period of time and listen carefully to the polling information that was provided. Now, one of the interesting things about reliance on that is that if the vote turns out opposite to the information we've been provided, and people say, "No, I don't want to pay that," it's not worth it. I like to point to that 2014 ODOT study that shows that driving on rough roads costs you, as a motorist, $410 more than driving on better roads in your own vehicle cost. So it'll be interesting to see how much credibility goes into the actual polling that led to, partly led to, the decision of the board to put this out for a vote. And I'm just really fascinated by it, and I agree with you, Commissioner Bozovic. I don't think that, you know, if it passes, it's not a great celebration. If it fails, it's not a great sadness. It just means that the voters have voted, and they've made their decision on this particular decision. Our Budget Committee is going to meet two days from now and balance the budget with the money that the voters have given us.
Thank you. Any further comments? Then we'll move on. Is there any emergency business today?
No.
Thank you. Then we'll move to the consent calendar, and the consent calendar is considered to be routine items, and are enacted in a single vote by the board with no discussion. And if anyone wants to see what's actually in the consent calendar, they can go to our agenda on our webpage, and they can click the additional materials under each item so they can get the detailed background of what we're passing as a single motion. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, with Commissioner Farr excused. So moving on to county administration, Mr. Mokr Heisky, announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I have a couple of things for you. This week is Public Works Week, appropriately, I guess, given the item on today's election. And I just wanted to note that, that May 17th to 23rd is National Public Works Week. And so we recognize our outstanding staff in road maintenance, waste management, land management, and parks. We have a great team of staff and leaders in public works that are providing critical services and really making sure that we're investing the limited taxpayer resources in one of the board's top three priorities, infrastructure. So I just want to make a note of that and give a thank you to all of our wonderful staff that are out there doing great work every day. I also thought I'd give you a quick update on the election. Voter turnout as of yesterday, May 18th, was 57,021 ballots. That's a 27.63% return. If you compare that to the same election in 2013, we'd received around 60, not quite 61,000 ballots at that time, so a little bit lower than 2003 election. The opening and pre-inspection boards will begin work at 4:00 PM today and will work until midnight or longer, as needed, tonight and into the morning. Duplicating and enhancing boards will begin on Thursday. The write-in preparation begins on Tuesday, May 26th, with write-in tally boards beginning Wednesday, May 27th. We have 22 no-candidate filed positions, and election certification will be completed by June 8th, which is the statutory deadline. So that's the last update I'll have before we have results beginning at 8:00 PM tonight. Let's see, I also was going to make a note, and Commissioner Sorensen mentioned this, related to the election tonight, we've said this publicly, but I just want to reiterate that we do have a Budget Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, May 21st, at which point the Budget Committee will reconcile and deliberate the final actions from the Budget Committee's process. And so we'll take into account the actions of voters tonight in balancing our budget on Thursday, and certainly talk more about that on Thursday and in the coming weeks. And finally, I wanted to let you know, we had a request from the City of Springfield to provide a support letter for a Tiger grant. This is a federal grant opportunity for improvements to Franklin Boulevard in the Glenwood area of Springfield. And I just wanted to let the board know that I'm intending to submit a support letter. They needed a rather quick turnaround by the end of this week, and otherwise we would have brought something to the board, but I'm going to go ahead and submit that support letter, which is consistent, we believe, with the board's priorities for both economic development and investment in public infrastructure for our community. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve, I just wanted to add that there's public comment Thursday.
Yes.
I believe it starts at 5:30. So we'll hear the public comment, and then we'll move into deliberations of the budget.
Thank you.
Please come if you have comments you want to submit.
Any other questions on the Administrator's report? So we are a little bit ahead of schedule, and I'm looking down the agenda, and I see Mr. Turk in the audience, and his item's scheduled to take about 10 minutes. So I was thinking maybe we could slip that in before the 9:30 time certain that's next up on the agenda. So we'll move to item 8A, which is Order 1505-1906, in the matter of accepting bids tendered at a sheriff's sale on April 30th, 2015, for surplus county-owned real property and authorizing the board chair to execute the quitclaim deeds. Mr. Turk.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The matter before you is to review and accept or not accept bids that were tendered at a sheriff's auction that was held on April 30th. This was an auction of properties the county had acquired through tax-for-closed properties. The sale went very well, to be honest, in the 23 years I've been doing this. It's the most successful sale I've had with both respect to revenue. We had $680,000 in sales, and more importantly, I think, is that 19 properties sold. And a lot of the properties that sold were the ones of, you know, minimal value, that may have only been valued to an adjoining owner, and a lot of these sold as well, which I think, as the board knows, sometimes cause issues more than the properties that are, you know, have a high value. One property was withdrawn from the sale, was a property on Main Street in Springfield in between 11th and 12th. Had a request for Main Street Housing to remove that property, as they had an interest in it for an affordable housing project they are doing, and it would benefit them. So they requested it to be removed while they do some homework on the property, and that was removed, which was initially approved by the board. I'd also like to thank Deputy Smelter, who was the auctioneer, who did an excellent job, and also Jane Burgess and Mike Davis from Public Works, as well as Stacy Smith from Assessment Taxation, who helped me with the sale and made it run very smoothly. And I will answer any questions if the board has. Oh, I'm sorry, I will also mention that a lot of the properties that sold, they're back on the tax rolls, some of them, some of the houses, they all need some work to them, some will need to be torn down, they're unimproved properties, so this will add employment and, you know, hopefully get some properties, increase their value and their tax revenue.
Questions for staff? So I have a quick one, just to be clear. You said the total sales are going to generate about $680,000?
Yes.
How much of that actually comes to Lane County?
After the county can recover its expenses in managing the tax-for-closed properties, and after those expenses are retained by the county, then the rest of the proceeds are dispersed to the taxing districts in the same manner as property taxes. So again, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll determine what the program's expenses are, and, you know, right now, they're running at about $200,000. And then the remainder gets dispersed to the taxing district, so the county will get whatever its share of the tax dollar is.
So as far as the tax recovery goes, it's basically 12 cents on a dollar in the current tax rates, including the jail levies, so we'll see about 12 cents on a dollar of $480,000 out of this sale.
Yes.
Just wanted to point that out for folks that heard that Lane County just got $680,000. Not quite. It's, you know, we get 12% of what's left after expenses, not the full amount. Most of that ends up in the school district's hands, so that's really what's important. And the biggest thing is what you noted, which is, this returns these properties back to the tax rolls, and it adds to employment as they get improved and reoccupied, and adds to our housing stock in Lane County, so it's an important activity that you undertake that's kind of an unsung thing that the county does in foreclosed properties. Any other questions for staff? Do we have a motion on the order? Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of Order 15-05-19-06, in the matter of accepting bids tendered at a sheriff's sale on April 30th, 2015, for the surplus county-owned real property and authorizing the board chair to execute the quitclaim deeds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, with Commissioner Farr excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're still ahead of schedule. And I know that 8B is not short, and so is 7A, so I'm looking to the folks back at Metro Waste. Are you guys prepared to start a few minutes early?
We are.
So why don't we move then to item 6B, which is Order Number 1505-1904, in the matter of ratifying the fiscal year 2015-16 regional wastewater program budget and improvements program as approved by the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission. And we have a very sensitive sound system, because it needs repair, so sorry about the computer noise. And we have Michelle Cahill and Matt?
Matt Stoudt.
Matt Stoudt and Kathleen Bishop, it looks like, from both Springfield and MWMC. So I'll turn it over to Michelle and Matt.
Matt will start us off.
Matt, okay, great.
All right. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here today before you. I want to introduce to you folks, Michelle Cahill of the City of Eugene, our wastewater division director, Catherine Bishop with City of Springfield, is one of our program managers. I am the general manager of MWMC with the City of Springfield. And in the audience, we have Tanya Kling and John Hubert with the City of Eugene and City of Springfield. So to start off, as you know, MWMC is a partnership between Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County. We've been in partnership since 1977, and I wanted to acknowledge Commissioner Stewart, who is currently serving on the MWMC. It was the 2014 MWMC president, as well as Commissioner Bozovic, who has served as a past commissioner. So where we're at in our budget process right now, is we're here today, May 19th, asking for the county to consider ratification of our budget. The MWMC held three work sessions and a public hearing, and on April 10th, they adopted the budget. We've been to the City of Springfield, and the Springfield City Council adopted the budget, or excuse me, ratified the budget on May 4th, and the City of Eugene ratified the budget on May 11th. And then, provided that the county ratifies today, we will be back before the MWMC for final adoption on June 12th. MWMC is, our work is directed by five key outcomes. We've discussed those here in the past. Particularly, I wanted to draw your attention to outcome number five, which is achieving and maintaining, having the public achieve and maintain public awareness and understanding of the MWMC and our commitment to the environment. Recently this year, the commission has expressed some interest in shaping our image and understanding what the community knows about MWMC and our services. We did a phone survey, surveyed 400 folks in Eugene, Springfield, Lane County. We also conducted a focus group to try to gauge their level of awareness for MWMC and the importances of those services that we provide. The reason I think this is worth noting is that, in general, folks were largely aware of the MWMC structure, although they were aware that services were being provided. They do place very high value, the studies show that they do place very high value on the services we provide, particularly with respect to the services protecting the environment and the water quality of our local waterways, also providing for recreational opportunities along the Willamette and McKenzie, and then the economic development that the services afford. We're going to take the results of this survey next year, actually this fall, and we're going to update our communications plan and move forward. Our work continues to be driven by our financial plan strategy, our budget does. We look to maximize our capital transfers. We're trying to move more towards a pay-as-you-go utility. We're looking to minimize taking on future debt, pushing out bond sales as far as possible, and we're, while at the same time, remaining positioned to potentially take on future debt financing. Our philosophy really is looking at, as far as rate increases go, we're looking to avoid rate spikes, and so we're looking for responsible, both responsible rate increases we can afford each year. This year's budget does contain a 2% rate increase, and that is less than previously forecast last year at this time. So looking forward, we have a number of challenges. We have a permit renewal that's pending. MWMC's permit has been on administrative extension since 2006. We're not unique in that regard. Several, most communities in the Willamette Valley are in similar status. We have a lot of uncertainty in the regulatory arena right now, and that's the reason for our permit being on extension. We do expect, however, that in 2017, 2018 timeframe, we'll get a new permit, and that will contain more stringent requirements. Briefly, temperature is a big issue right now in the environmental arena. The temperature standard that Oregon currently has has been challenged by an environmental group, and that, a portion of that standard has been invalidated, and so we're expecting a ruling, this has been going on for several years, we're expecting a ruling this summer that will help us move forward in that regard. I wanted to briefly mention a couple of our operating programs. We have a regional lab that does our process control, and that lab conducts over 35,000 tests annually for water quality parameters. We also have a robust industrial pretreatment programs in both communities, and I'm pleased to report that that program was recently audited by the Environmental Protection Agency and DEQ over a three-day period in end of April, and we had a large review of all of our files, all of our permitted industries, and there was no issues that were going to be referred to enforcement, and there are a few requirements that they would like to see for the programs to work better, but it was a very successful audit, largely in part due to the staff we have working in those programs. This year's budget overall reflects a 4% increase. As I noted, there's a 2% user fee increase reflected. The reason for the 4% increase is twofold, primarily driven by personnel costs, costs associated with salaries, retirement benefits, medical costs, premiums, et cetera. We have an increase in our M&amp;S as well. Recently, a few years back, MWMC invested heavily in improving the landscaping around the treatment facility, was a $1.6 million project, and we had a two-year maintenance period where the contractor provided maintenance. We are taking that maintenance on this year. We're planning for how we are going to deal with that. We're planning for how we are going to deal with that. This graph shows the budget history for the operating budget on a five-year trend. And what is important to note here is, on average, the annual increase is about 2.5% over the last five years. I wanted to move in and talk a little bit about our capital programs. I'll talk about completed projects, and then carryover projects, and then we'll move into currently planned projects. We recently completed the repair and replacement of our biosolids force main project. That was a $1.8 million capital project that allowed us to repair the line that spans six miles from the regional treatment plant to our biosolids facility on Aubrey Lane. We focused on adding access points to help with maintenance of that line, and we looked to eliminate struvite, which is a chemical that builds up in the line over time with the transport of biosolids and reduces the capacity. We are carrying over several projects. Thermal load projects continue to be a major concern for us. This includes the planning and implementation associated with our expected thermal load limits. It also includes our recycled water planning and study, feasibility studies, as well as our repair and shading work, and our work with water quality trading and pilot programs. Two additional projects include our digestion capacity project and our decommissioning of one of our lagoons. Right now, we have three anaerobic digesters, and we're looking to add a fourth to meet increasing capacity needs to plant due to growth, to also allow us to meet regulatory requirements. And at the same time, we're going to be decommissioning a lagoon that's no longer in service and does not meet regulatory requirements. And these projects total about $13.6 million. One other project that is of general interest is our poplar harvest management associated with our poplar harvest. We have a 600-acre biosolids management facility, as I mentioned, out on Aubrey Lane. About 450 acres of that is planted in poplar in three different phases. We've been working with Lane Forest Products to harvest the first phase over the last year and a half, and that harvest is nearly complete. The product that we're producing right now is chips, and that's been going to the local market. We are also looking at other options. We're exploring making veneer, and that's, we've had a successful trial run, but I'm not sure if the market, how much promise there will be with the market in veneer, but we are exploring additional options besides chips. And we are looking to finish harvest this year, start harvest of Phase Two in a couple of years, and we're working on a replanting strategy as we speak. I'm going to turn it over to Michelle now, and she can talk a little bit about our upcoming projects.
Thank you. Michelle Cahill, Wastewater Division Director for City of Eugene. And I will highlight that we have some space improvements, building improvements that are in the programming stage, pre-design work this year. Next year's budget is proposed to do the design work. It would affect three buildings on site that house our staff, that keep the plant running, and our regional facilities. The maintenance building is on the left side of the screen, where our maintenance crews are shoulder-to-shoulder in the multipurpose room and in the locker room. So we're proposing a bulb out to that building. Our operations and admin building, both of these structures were built in 1984 and could be improved to address the changes we've seen in technology and staffing and way businesses function over the last 30 years. And then finally, the industrial source control building, and also houses some analysts, has been a series of temporary modular buildings. And this project, we hope to incorporate that staff in with the rest of the staff. We're planning for a 30-year projection of space needs, and in the fiscal year 15-16 budget, it's $1.3 million for design, and future years will include construction. Other capital program is, I think, really cool. We have an engine generator now, and it needs either a major upgrade or replacement. And we've done triple bottom line analysis on what to do with this generator that uses the biogas that's a byproduct of wastewater treatment. Currently, we are able to use gas to provide about 55% of our electrical needs, and it also provides heat for sledge digestion and hot water and building heat. The budget includes an upgrade to replace this engine, so we would use our gas to generate 100% of our electrical needs, and really minimize the amount of gas that we flare. Another cool capital replacement would be the integrated tool carrier, which is a vehicle that has multiple attachments, so it could do many, many jobs. It's an expensive piece of equipment, but it's a good bang for the buck, I think. We also have a couple utility trucks and an electrical cart in the equipment replacement part of the capital budget. And I would note that we use electric carts and bicycles for a majority of the travel on our 100-acre facility on River Avenue. So then, snapshot, forward-looking for the capital budget. This year's proposed budget is $21.9 million. $10 million of this is carryover. You can imagine that we need to have all the funding for projects when we commence them, but many projects take more than a year to complete. So $10 million is carryover, and $11.9 million is new money. That includes $3.86 for asset management and $8 million for capital improvements. So overall, the five-year plan is $75.4 million. And then just a little look back. You may recall that we had a facility plan that we adopted in 2005, identified a lot of improvements to meet bacteria standards and some capacity needs. The bulk of those got completed by 2010, which was a regulatory requirement, but there are still projects we need to do. We work hard to continually look at the facility plan and make sure our projects are done just in time to meet regulatory and capacity needs. So, that's a snapshot. And then, what we're asking for, and of course, you have lots of options, but we hope that you would approve the board order that ratifies the fiscal year 15-16 regional wastewater program budget and the capital improvements program, as has been approved by the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission and ratified by the other partners in the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission. And we're available for questions or conversation.
Any questions? Commissioner Stewart?
I don't have any questions. As someone who serves on the board, I think this is probably that, what, third or fourth time I've worked through this, seen the buzz of representation, and a part of it. I wanted to thank staff, they do an excellent job. We're, our board is very mindful of our costs and increases that we need to pass along to comply with the upgrades that we've taken on and the mandatory regulations that we have to meet. One thing that I wanted to share in the meeting, because last week, we discussed asking the governor, we actually passed, or asking the governor to declare a drought. And one of the items that I wanted, that might be critical, that might help us through that if we actually see that happen, is Metro Wastewater's put in some infrastructure. I don't believe there's quite enough infrastructure to potentially ship, I guess, treated water over to the gravel side where it's delta, so as possible that if they are struggling to find water rights to be able to meet their needs for the water, that they could reuse water from Metro Wastewater. So I'm hoping that in light of the potential summer that we're facing, and also with the changes in the climate and the drier years that we're going through, that I think that it would be very prudent that we look at that as a viable option to meet some of the needs. And it will, if they can use the water reused, then they don't need to be pulling anything out of the river, which is beneficial in other ways. So, just wanted to throw that out, that you're working hard to be good stewards and look for these type of opportunities. We've engaged with tree planting, repairing zone enhancement, you know, lots of different things that we're trying to reduce our impact in our community, and here might be another potential way to do that.
Commissioner Stewart?
Hi. I wonder if you could go back to the slide. I think it was about the second or third slide from the beginning that dealt with the picture of the fish, and I think you said that there was, there are issues, there it is. There are issues regarding the temperature standard, and that the temperature standard's in place to protect endangered salmon, and there are thermal load challenges. I'd like to get into that part of that slide and just ask you, what is the temperature standard? Who set it?
The temperature, Commissioner Stewart, the temperature standard is, has been set by the state. It is in flux right now. It's set under what's called a TMDL, which is a total maximum daily load. And it basically, it's, I'm struggling in my mind to remember what the standard is. I believe it's 18 degrees Celsius. And so it says that the water that you discharge to the river has to be, during certain periods of the year, it has to be a certain temperature. And the standard is different based on times of the year for rearing, whether there's salmon migrating through a corridor or the stream, or if they're actually rearing salmon at the time of year. So it's, but it's predicated based on a human, this piece called a human use allowance, and that has been, which is a point, which says in essence, you're allowed to increase the temperature of the water 0.3 degrees Celsius over the temperature standard. That's been disallowed currently under the court ruling. And so, the thinking and the basis for the potential lawsuit is that if the methodology with which you set your total maximum daily load is flawed, then potentially the entire total maximum daily load or temperature is flawed and need to revisit that. That's being revisited currently, and it's, we expect that the services in the National Marine Fisheries Services and one other fish and wildlife will be ruling this summer. That has been, that ruling has been expected for over a year, it keeps getting delayed.
So, just zeroing in on the state part of this, the State Department of Environmental Quality is setting a maximum daily load level for all waterways in Oregon? Or is this specific to our Metropolitan Wastewater Management?
This one is specific to the Willamette River.
To the Willamette River?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a group that is suing the state, saying that standard for the Willamette River is too low, and therefore, the courts or the Administrative Agency, DEQ, or the Environmental Quality Commission should set a different or better standard?
Yes, Commissioner Stewart, there is a group that filed suit.
Who is that group?
That is Northwest Environmental Advocates. They're, go by NWEA.
Okay. And are they, is the court going to set those, or is the agency going to set those?
So, the NWEA challenged EPA, which approved, the Environmental Protection Agency approved Department of Environmental Quality, the state standards. And that did go through the courts. The judge said the standard wasn't appropriate, and has said just that there were multiple components of the standard, and now just the biological standard, 18 degrees Celsius. But, as Matt said, that's been referred to the services. They need, they'll look at that again. The anticipation is that the temperature standard will be lowered, and so we'll have a hard time meeting a colder river standard for protection.
When will that likely happen? When will we have to meet a colder river standard?
So, we expect that the ruling will occur sometime this year. As far as when MWMC will need to meet that, when we get a new permit, there will be provisions in there that says you need to be meeting this standard at that time. And we expect that there'll be a compliance period that will allow us to get there. And so we don't anticipate a new permit for two to three years, and then we expect a compliance period within our permit to allow us to get there. And this is, this goes further into the part, part of the reason why we have a, basically, we have a portfolio of options that we're looking at for trying to meet the temperature standard that include utilizing recycled water, thermal load mitigation as far as shading is concerned, pulling some of our treated cleaned wastewater out of the river and sending it to our poplar farm to put on our trees, et cetera.
Okay. And is this, how would you rate this? Is this a big and expensive challenge? Is this a big but not so expensive challenge? Is this not a big challenge? How would you explain that to a group of well-meaning commissioners?
I would say that it's a very big and complex, expensive, challenging issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lykan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm assuming the judge was a biologist as well? Oh, never mind. Next topic. So I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Stewart's thought here, because I think it's a really relevant and solid thought. As a former golf course owner, no longer, sold out of interest a few years ago, it's very commonplace for golf courses and others to use what we call the gray water, non-portable water, to actually do the watering of the course, instead of coming straight out of the drinking water. So I think that that thought is really, I think it's very, very relevant. In fact, I remember when Commissioner Stewart was on this board, my brother and I actually came to him at one time, many years ago, about a potential golf course, which unfortunately didn't work out, because we were actually willing to take the Coburg, at the time, the Coburg water, the gray water, and use it, and so it doesn't, so it wouldn't be dispersed in the river, but instead use it on the golf course to maintain. So, I think that that, I think that's really very worthwhile to take a closer look at, especially with the, after the drought declaration. So, I know Commissioner Stewart's on the board, and he does such, in my opinion, was exceptional on it. And so, hopefully, this is something that will continue down, because I, whether we have to go through this again, hopefully, we won't have to, but at least it's an option there in the future. So, we really appreciate that. It's really good thinking on Commissioner Stewart's part on that, and hopefully, that's something that can be done in the future. And hopefully, this is our last time for drought declaration, but you can never, can't tell. So, thank you.
So, Commissioner Stewart kind of stole a question I was going to ask about Delta and the reuse project there, for obvious reasons. It's all on our mind, that it's, you know, and Commissioner Sorenson pointed out why it's so critical that we find reuse opportunities for wastewater. It's not just about temperature standards. There was a significant change in the fish consumption rules, which changed our ability to have everything from pharmaceutical constituents in wastewater to, you know, very small amounts of various chemicals and other things that are in wastewater discharged to a river also. So, we're basically getting to a point where it's going to be a zero-discharge plant, if the rules keep moving in the direction they're moving. So reuse is a really critical issue for this community, and finding opportunities for that reuse, I think are going to be really critical. And at the same time, I think they can also be beneficial, and that it will reduce our use of potable water, you know, that we pay to treat on the other side of the pipeline system, to get it up to drinking water standards so that it's safe for human consumption, and to utilize that for washing rock or, you know, watering a golf course seems kind of silly. So, the more we can get people to accept reused, treated sewage water, you know, which is really, you know, you put that word sewage in there, and people immediately go, "Ah," you know? "I don't want to be anywhere near that. I don't want to be on grass that's been watered by it," you know? And people don't understand that what we're actually discharging from the treatment plant almost meets drinking water standards. I mean, it is that clean. And that capital plan that you highlighted, that we finished up and we're now getting into the next phases of capital improvements, is why that's so clean coming out of that. You know, the tertiary treatment standards we're doing nowadays, you know, wouldn't have been, you know, people are remembering their childhoods and what they saw coming out of sewage treatment plant, at least for me, back in the '60s, was far different than what you see coming out of a treatment plant now. And that's the institutional memory that's in the public right now. When I think about reuse, that's what you have to overcome, is that institutional memory. But, you know, I think it shows, though, in your But, you know, I think it shows though in your survey work about how people don't know about your structure and really don't know much about the service other than, you know, when they flush, it goes away. And as long as that happens, they don't think about where it goes and what happens to it. So, and it's part of, you know, going back to your capital plan, it was the odor control work you guys had done over the years that people no longer even realize that treatment plant's there when they're walking down the bike path on the Willamette River and, you know, which used to be noticeable, you know, 20 years ago or so. So, you know, you're, you're out of sight, out of mind, you know? And as long as everything works, it's like a lot of infrastructure. It's so hard to get people to understand the needs of it, the needs to meet all these environmental standards and the fact that eventually it does break down, whether it's a solid transfer line out to the poplar farm or it's, it's just the buildings that house the people that keep the rest of it working. It's infrastructure. It has to be maintained and repaired. We're dealing with the same sort of trying to convince the public on our, on our streets right now. Every, every piece of infrastructure out there that's publicly owned, that the taxpayers have invested their money in building, needs to be maintained and trying to, to reach out and, and get people, I applaud the commission and, and trying to raise the public awareness of MWMC because you guys function so well, you don't make the news. You know? Which is great, but it's also a disadvantage, people not understanding. There are some, some threats to having, what you call avoiding rate spikes. A simple court decision can cause a rate spike due to a need to borrow an excessive amount of money to meet a new standard. And that, and people are completely unaware of that and it becomes a shock when it happens. You know, we get an adverse court ruling and you guys have to raise your rates to pay for the capital improvements to meet the new standard. All of a sudden everyone's complaining about their sewer bills and they have been completely unaware of the system up to that point. So I applaud you guys for your efforts at public outreach, getting the public to understand. And I also applaud you for the fact that the public doesn't know who you are because you're doing your jobs if they don't. So it's kind of a double edged sword. So I appreciate the, the report and the budget looks really good. You know, having sat on the commission for a couple of years, I have a little bit of an insider's look and of course, having been a civil engineer, I have an even more insider's look. So a really great job. Are there any other questions for the staff here at MWMC? Seeing none, do I have a motion on the order? Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order 15-05-19-04 in a matter of ratifying the fiscal year 2015 through 16. Regional wastewater program budget and capital improvements program as approved by the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Farr excused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So moving on in our agenda, that brings us to Item 7A, Public Safety, in Order 1505-1905 in a matter of awarding a contract for medical, dental, and mental health services for the Lane County Adult Corrections Division and granting authority to the county administrator to execute the contract. And I think we have Captain Dan Buckwald and some legal counsel.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity, Commissioners. Are we there? So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about this new contract. Essentially what has happened is last December, Horizon came to us with a contract extension. As we prepared to negotiate, they brought forward an aggregate cap that was never in the original contract. They had cost increases that were not consistent with the CPI. We use the Portland Index. It was our, in our best belief that it was time to look for another provider. So we put out an RFP. We received four providers that applied. One of them was our current provider. We went through a vetted process and we've arrived with a very good provider. I'm very eager to work with these folks, with CFMG. Timelines were pretty crucial as we made the decision in December and then trying to get everything timed out. That's why we're coming to use such short notice.
Questions for staff? So, doesn't look like we have any questions. Commissioner Stewart?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the work. I noticed that we had four, four folks that submitted requests for proposals and looked like pretty good due diligence to narrow down the recommended ones. So with that, I'd like to...
If I could say one more thing, sir?
Sure.
One of the things that we looked at, this is my first RFP process and it's very extensive. I was very surprised at how detailed it is. With our new company, CF, CFMG, one of the things we were looking at is really our priority was service. And CFMG comes to us with a high focus on mental health, dealing with the folks that are in our jail. We look at the mental illness that's in our community, how the jail's become that de facto mental health institution, how are we dealing with these folks? They've got an outstanding plan. They're going to work with us on a mutual agreement here. Everybody remembers Richard Sherman and what he did for this community as far as dealing with inmates with mental health. We're going to marry those, those plans together. They also bring with them a cognitive-based therapy for inmates. We're not going to warehouse inmates. We're going to put them through CBTs. We're going to start that off in the jail, take that into alternative programs, and then make the handoff for local, for local supervised offenders to parole and probation. Part of this agreement is that they're going to work closely with Lane County Behavioral Health and Lane County Health and Human Services. We've got a lot of things that we're going to be doing in conjunction as a collaboration with these agencies and the jail is going to be the focal point. This is really going to be a win-win situation.
So if I might add, so I've had the opportunity to be able to discuss this with the new sheriff a little bit. And he shared with me that the folks are going to bring in a crew and they're going to be here for a training crew, I think in, in excess of six months. It sounded to me like there was some really good steps you pointed out, additional focus on mental health. I guess the question for me in this, when we moved to contracted service three years ago, I guess, we had a pretty good projection of savings. I think that was reaffirmed by the sheriff, discussed the savings and, and costs. Was there any analysis done to make sure that we're still achieving the savings and what it might cost if we were to, once again, you know, provide that service through our own department instead of contracting it out?
Do you want to take that?
Well, I, we, I don't know what the cost would be. We do know that this contract results in a budgeted savings from what was projected for next fiscal year and that's a conversation we'll have with the Budget Committee on Thursday. We, you know, I guess we can look at what, I would, I would imagine that the cost would be greater. Typically you contract out for services if you can maintain the same or, same quality or better quality at a lower cost. And so it's my understanding that in the past, that the catalyst for moving in this direction originally was, was to achieve some reduction in cost. And so I would presume that it would be, result in an increase if we were to restaff at the level that it was previously with in-house employees, but we can look further into that if that's a desire of the board.
Oh, good.
I can also, one of the things that Captain Buckwald mentioned was that this was a fairly sudden decision last December. The contract originally we entered into allowed for up to three renewals. And we anticipated renewing that contract for another year. It was only when we saw the price for this coming year that was significantly greater that the sheriff's office realized that we were going to have to look for an alternative. The difficulty with bringing, with doing it in-house is that trying to provide for that, hire people, train people, and provide that was not something that we had the skills or ability to do on the timeline we had left available when we found out we were going to have to do something. I think that's probably reasonable to look at. Over the next few years, this contract would be again, a one-year contract with three possible renewals. And if, and if the board would like us to look at that, I think there's no reason why we couldn't look at that for next year or the year after and see if the savings are still there.
Yeah. As for me, I would appreciate just, you know, we've had it in the past. We had a projected savings when we made the initial move to the contracted services. I believe that they were fairly close to what the projection was. I believe if my memory was correct, it was in excess of $1.5 million savings. And that's back then what helped us keep the jail level at the number of beds that we had available. So just, just kind of like to, you know, there's no cost in here and I understand that it's probably, it's derived from the services rendered and the time and stuff. But I think it'd be good to have a report back at some point to make sure that those costs are within what the expected costs are, maybe compared to what we've seen historically. I understand prices go up, certainly within a certain percentage, but just want to make sure that we're still, you know, we're verifying that we're still on the right path in the way we're providing these services.
Yes, and we are. We're, the actual bid was lower than our current provider. So there, there's a, a very good savings there. And this contract also comes with a fixed risk, meaning the contract that we accept, price that we accept, we don't pay anything above that. If the, if the costs go over that amount, the provider pays those.
Mr. Chair, the Budget Committee had asked about this at, I believe, a committee meeting earlier last week. And we have detailed information about the cost comparison of the current cost and the, the proposed new contract cost that we will be presenting to the Budget Committee, I believe today or tomorrow in writing. And then we'll discuss again on Thursday. So you'll have all that detailed information about what the new cost for this contract would be compared to what the existing contract cost is.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Now, you know, when we first did the contract, we were told that they would not be coming back with additional costs. So right away, we were alerted in December that they were in fact coming back with additional costs, when the whole premise of doing this three years ago was we would get a good deal from them and we would get such a good deal that we'd be able to renew it. Okay? Well, number one, they breached the contract by, by not continuing the level of service and continuing their other obligations under the contract. So to me, you know, the way to look at this is we were promised savings and we didn't get the savings. We were promised that they would renew so we wouldn't have to do this all over again and they didn't come through. So I would like to know if we could shorten the period of this so that we could transition back to doing it ourselves. And I think it's unfair to say that we're saving money when in fact we do not know the outcome of how much additional litigation costs will come in under our current contract. So it seems to me we are actually not getting the savings because we don't know the costs associated with the current contract and the current contracts and their breach of our current contract. So what can we do to shorten this so we could transition back to not contracting it out with organizations that will obviously come in, as this one, as the new one is doing, to get our business, give us a low ball? We are, we're happy that we're getting these savings. We think we're getting these savings, but more in fact not getting the savings because they come back and either breach or come back and, and once their nose is under the tent, ask for more. Do you have any solution to this problem?
Well, again, I'll say that I'm, I'm new to this process. I wasn't involved in the original RFP or the original transition. I think that the costs of this contract have been consistent over the first three years, have been consistent and within the price escalators that were identified in the contract for inflation of medical costs. I think it was this year that was the surprise. And the other part about that is we've had some litigation with the existing contractor and that's still pending. And not litigation with us, but against them.
Well, it is against us.
Yes, well, it certainly involves us.
Yeah. And that's what I'm saying is we can't say we've had any savings because we haven't had the bill for that yet. So yeah, in year one and year two, it looked pretty good. But as year three approached, they came back with more money and they breached the contract. That's, I mean, first of all, for Captain Buckwald and yourself, I have no problem with your work in trying to follow the direction that's been given to you. Okay? I have no problem with the hard work that goes into all this. What I'm talking about is the policy choice to go for the privatization of these public services and be sold, in my judgment, a bill of goods. It's going to save you money, but in fact, it doesn't save us money. It costs us money. And now we can't apparently even make, go back to doing it ourselves because we've already committed to this privatization route.
Commissioner Sorenson, actually I think that we could go back to that if that were something the board wants to consider. It's just a matter of that the quality of care that has to be provided to jail inmates is pretty high. And I think it wouldn't be fair to staff or, or the inmates to try and ramp that up. It's not the kind of thing, we're talking right now with a, with a vendor who does this all the time about needing six weeks to get them to make, just to make the transition.
Right.
And I think we were driven, I think the sheriff's office has been driven in this particular case by timing.
Right.
But if time is not a factor, there isn't anything to prohibit the board from, from, from taking a position.
And I don't want to prolong this. I'll just say that thank you for all your hard work on this, trying to cope with this, getting us the best we can get out of what we can. I am going to vote no on this, on this motion to approve this contract, not because of disrespect of you and you and all the people that are trying to comply with this very difficult thing. I just feel we will be better off, and we have been better off, to do it ourselves and use our own resources. And I believe in the end, we would have every incentive. And by the way, just for a matter of comparison, we are going in exactly the opposite direction on our health insurance. Our 1,300 employees have been, we've been paying insurance for our 1,300 employees. And somewhere in the vicinity of June 1 to July 1 to August 1 of this year, we're going to make a transition to running our own healthcare ourselves. So we're making exactly the opposite direction here where we're trying to provide these services in a privatized manner when in fact, in our other decision, a major decision, over $20 million, we are making the decision, we could save the money and provide the quality of care at or higher for less money than a private company. So, and again, that's more advocacy. It really has nothing to do with what you guys are trying to do and complying with the current board's directive. I just feel like we're going in the wrong direction.
So I'd like to address a few of those statements. One is a convenient reorganization of the facts is not an accurate portrayal of the past three years of this contract. Over the past three years, there has been no breach of the contract and the cost escalations have been what were stated in the original contract. So there hasn't been some sudden escalation. Now, this particular year is a renewal year that has an opportunity to open the economics of the contract. And the contractor chose to propose a higher price, which we decided was worth us having an RFP process. It wasn't that it was against the contract for him to propose a higher price. Am I accurate in that?
Correct.
Okay. So there was no breach of contract by asking for more money in a year with, is open to ask for more money, just as when we have an economic reopeners with a labor union, they're allowed to ask for more money during an economic reopeners. allowed to ask for more money during an economic reopeners. It's part of the contract we agreed to with that organization. Now, as far as litigation costs go, yes, it's unknown at this time, but we also don't know what litigation we avoided by not running the service ourselves. We could very well have been in the same situation with our staff providing the service as with the contractor providing the service. In fact, I've sat in many an executive session and settled many a lawsuit that resulted from when we had staff running medical at the jail. And some of them were pretty darn big settlements. The fortunate thing, at least now, is we're, what we're arguing about is indemnification clause in the current contract, and that's the litigation we're involved in right now. And whether, if we win that argument, there will be no liability on the county's part. So that, you know, that's, that, you know, we actually are protected by that contract in a lot of ways. And the new contract, I believe, has similar protections built into it. We contract a lot of services out. I mean, just look at what happened with our community care organization. We now contract most of our health service provision through Trillium. We could not reverse that in six months. We could not restaff and bring back everything that Trillium is doing now for Lane County in less than six months, just as all the other services we contract out for. We don't, you know, we have a, almost a half billion dollar budget. We do not have a half billion dollars worth of staff in Lane County. So, you know, to point out that we're bringing back insurance internally is about, more about risk pool and doing, and taking on self and that risk internally and avoiding some costs, it's not the same thing as providing a healthcare service. It's a different service. It's a different provision. So I, you know, Commissioner Sorenson, feel free to vote no, but your statements about why you're voting no are not completely based in the facts of this contract and in our ability to bring this back. We were saving approximately one and a half million a year with the contracting out. I don't know where we're going to come up with an extra million and a half. We have a, we have a proposed balanced budget right now. We would have to cut staff somewhere to make up that difference to bring medical services back at the level that we originally had staffed them internally. So, you know, it may be symbolic, but we have a very good contract proposed to us, a contract that wraps around some medical, some mental health services, which we're holding a long work session tomorrow about our provision of mental health services. It actually wraps in cognitive theory, cognitive-based treatment, which hands off to our other agencies that are using the same model very well. It's a good contract and it's a one-year contract for the re-up. So if during the next couple of months, you can convince us that we need to have a different model, then we might have 10 months to look out and see about changing that model. But it's, it's a one-year contract. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, the contract is for one year with the option to renew up to three times on a one-year basis each time.
So we'll have an opportunity to discuss whether we want to make this change. I don't think if we went with a shorter contract of six months, that we could successfully install medical services in our adult corrections facilities in six months. So shortening the length of contract is not a reason to vote no on this. You know, it'll take us a year to do that. So the length of contract is the correct term if that's the direction you decide, if you can convince the rest of the board to go there. Mr. Mochai, and then I got Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to share with you some information that the Sheriff's Office has pulled together that will be presented, as I mentioned, to the Budget Committee. And it estimates the savings over the four-year period from fiscal year 12, 13 through 15, 16. Actually, I should just say the three years, so the past three years, including this year and the prior two, is approximately $5 million compared to what it would have been had you have taken the in-house county staff compared to what the actual contract costs were. So for that three-year period, it's approximately $5 million. And then, you know, again, the staffing costs were adjusted for inflation and the contract costs were adjusted as the, based on actual experience and then what we're projecting for next year. So we'll get into more detail on that with the Budget Committee and happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to let you know that we have looked at comparison of in-house versus external. And at least in the last three years, we've seen a significant reduction in cost with the private contract.
Thank you for that information. Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm trying to figure this out. And so the highest rated vendor was CMGC. Is that correct?
Yes, MG.
So it's, I have CMGC in mind, but it's CFMG, correct? So is it the California Forensic Medical Group?
That's correct. Actually, it's the California, it's the, it's CMGCDBA, CFMG.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
So there's a parent corporation and then depending on which initials you choose to make the acronym from.
That's kind of what I thought, but so it looks like, from what I pulled up on their website, are we going to be their first non-California client?
We're not their first, but we're the first in the Pacific Northwest.
Pacific Northwest.
Correct.
Very good. And it looks, I appreciate how long they've been in business, this type of thing. What I would like to do, I want to go back to Commissioner Sorenson's comments. Now, the fact that this is a one-year, you're going to come back and then with the potential of a three-year, what I don't want to do is get involved, the Sheriff's Department is responsible for the operations. We're the keeper of the dollars. And so I, I'm not prepared to go to, I think it might be a little extreme and where Commissioner Sorenson wants to go, but I do appreciate his comments because I think what the one year would allow us to do is at least provide that little bit of oversight. So coming back to see if it is working and then we can potentially adapt for, if it's, if the board feels like maybe this isn't where we want to go in the future from a financial standpoint, we could then potentially go back to where we were in the, before we started contracting out. Isn't that correct? I believe, Jim, I heard you say that that's clearly a possibility.
If I'm, my understanding is that the board wants to go that direction, that any function of the county be replaced by staff. It would just take time to plan for it.
Okay. And I would, that's why I think this makes sense, at least for this year. And I appreciate the due diligence on looking at the vendors. And so I'm actually, I'm comfortable where we're going now, but I do appreciate the fact that this will come back and potentially be ratified or to take, or I guess to look at, is it three-year options, is that correct, after the, after this year?
Three additional, yeah, three one-year possible extensions.
Okay. So I think that that makes sense and that we can then, it can come back to the board here in a year. We can take a look at this, see if it continues to make sense. Because I think what we need to really do is not, like I said, you're responsible for the operation. I think that's on the Sheriff's Department. But I think because of the fact that we worked diligently, very, very hard just to get this last secure rural schools in place, we don't know where that's going in the future. We continue to call it one-time money because that's clearly what it has become. So I think that this, what this will do is allow us to take a look at this and after a year to see, okay, where's Lane County today financially compared to where we were even the year before? And if it continues to make sense to contract this out, then I'm, then I would, I would be fine with that. But I think with this one year allows this new vendor to, I think, get their, get themselves locked in and you will know if they're doing a justifiable job for you or not. And I think we will too. So appreciate the good work. I think, you know, when I was listening to Commissioner Sorenson, I wasn't quite ready to go down that road, but I am clearly interested to see where we are in a year from now, to see if it makes sense to take a look at this, the three-year option in a sense. And so, good work. I look forward to the new vendor and see what's, see what happens here in the next year. Thank you.
Mr. Sorenson?
You know, when we originally approved the original contract, I said at the time that the company will come in with a lowball offer and then within a few years, they will raise the amount of money they want. Okay? That is exactly what happened. Number one. Number two, part of what was alluded to is that there is a part of our deal with that vendor that they will defend us. They have not defended us. We are incurring costs. Now, it may not be costs associated with this contract because it may come out of another portion of the county's budget, but that's a cost. Okay? And I think if we could begin monitoring this and go, are we happy with what these folks are doing? Or are we going to get the same kind of problem that we got with the other firm? Okay? Maybe if we come back in three, four months during the happiest period of this contract, when they want our business and they're really trying, that's maybe the best moment for my colleagues to hear. It's all going really good. Okay? And then if it starts to unravel, maybe then we take a look at the transition. That seems reasonable.
I'll keep you in the loop.
Yeah. Okay, good. So let's not prolong this. I'll just say, as you can tell, I'm not happy about it. I think my prediction has proven to be entirely accurate. And I think now if we could just evaluate whether it's really working or not, all things considered, you could even convert me. I doubt it, but you could convert me.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So here's a question I have to our county administrator. So my question would be, I personally don't think three or four months is long enough, but I would be interested in potentially having maybe the, I think, six months could potentially give some, probably enough detail of what is transpiring with the vendor and maybe just provide, come back to the board, provide an update on what's happening before we get to that, that one year and where we then make the decision one way or another if we're going to go with the additional options. Is that something that's possible? And I'm going to look also to Captain Buckwald on this. From your perspective, is that possible where maybe come back to the board in six months and maybe just kind of provide an update to see where, what is happening? And again, it's the operational side, I think, but also maybe from a financial side, even after six months, if it's, if it's making sense, is that something that's possible?
Of course it is, Commissioner. And I meet with their HSA on a daily basis. We go over really everything, who goes to the hospital, treatments being provided, our work with behavioral health, our work with Health and Human Services. We have a lot of pokers in the fire, if you will. And I have no problem coming back and addressing everybody with a six-month period, an evaluation of where we're at. We're looking at this as a partnership and they're coming in, actually this Thursday to start interviewing. So we've had great contact with them and I have no problem preparing something for you in six months. Well, I don't expect to change my good friend, Commissioner Sorenson, the vote today, but I'm, at least I think what I'm trying to do is meet him halfway and where he looked at three to four months, but I think six months is very legitimate and where we can at least provide just some information to see where we are on this as we move forward. And so I appreciate the comments, I think, from our board today and I look forward to where we are. And I'll just ask that the future agenda team maybe as well, just to make sure that this is on our, on our plate and within six months to come back and provide the information to the board.
Commissioner, one thing that is in the, in this memorandum that we have here that is to be negotiated with them that we've asked for is a six-month audit of the services that would be, that would have to be presented to us by the end of January. And I think that might be a good time because then we would have the data. I think, what was it, Mayor Bloomberg said, you know, "In God we trust, all others bring data," when he was talking about the administration of the city of New York. And I would say that by the time we receive that report, that's on our agenda to negotiate with them that at the end of January of 2016, that we should be able to provide hard data as well as a subjective report in the status of the contract.
That sounds like a plan. I, you know, I've been involved in public contracting for quite a long time, either as a consulting engineer or doing the actual contracting at E-Web. And I will say that the initial contract with the three-year re-ups performed just like it was supposed to perform where the costs were contained by the clauses written in the original contract for cost increases. At the end of that three-year period, though, the contract became open-ended and the contractor chose to ask for a large increase. You may say that was, he came in as a lowball and did that, but I think my response three years ago when we signed this contract was if they do that, we'll rebid it. You take that chance. If you lowball a contract thinking you're going to get your foot in the door and decide to raise the price when it becomes an open thing, that you will have to recompete for that contract, which is exactly what happened, which is what you do under public contracting law. And we do it time and time and time again with everything from overlay services for our Public Works Department to, you know, who provides our, you know, printing and copying. We had a large discussion about that a while back. If somebody comes in here with a lowball, they are taking the risk that they will not get renewed if they have a sudden jump in their contract prices and that we'll put it out on the street again and they will have to compete with the rest of it. That's what's the beauty of public contracting is it is an open competition and a very prescribed open process for competition. And I think what we're seeing here today is a result of that, that process where it was open for bids, you know, the current contractor could compete for it and obviously wasn't hungry to renew the business. We have a, have an excellent contractor proposed who is asked, is actually going to add to our service level in the jail, particularly with mental health. So I'm looking forward to approving this contract. And I think coming back in six months with the audit in January, so we have some data in front of us is a great suggestion and I look forward to that time. And that hopefully will give us time to consider over this next six months whether we want to, at that time, look at the options we have available to us, whether we want to bring this service back in-house or not. You know, we have that option with every service we contract out in Lane County, whether we want to bring them in or out and move them back and forth. And we've moved some in and out of the county and brought them back. So, and probably the example right now is bringing in our health insurance in-house. So, but that didn't happen overnight. That took significant planning to do so. And this will take significant planning to do so and data will help, is helpful. So I appreciate the work that both of you have done in doing the RFP and the process that was held under Oregon public contracting law to identify a successful bidder for this service. And it looks like we're going to have a significant cost savings because we went through that process. So I appreciate the work you've done.
So any further comments? Mr. Stewart?
Just to readdress, it sounds like we're going to get some more information on cost savings. I heard you pretty clear that there was a $5 million projected savings over three years. That's very significant. So I appreciate that. As I've looked through the board document, I didn't see where there was any listed of cost services, if they were the lowest bidder or that. So, you know, maybe additional information might be just.
They were not the lowest bidder.
Oh, I thought, okay. They were lower than what we're currently at. Did I hear that right? Okay. So that information wasn't part of the board packet, so I wasn't aware of it. But I do agree that, you know, a review of it, it sounds like we've got a cost if we were to provide it. I mean, how else would we be able to determine there was a $5 million savings? So it'd be easy pretty much to compare it to what the RFP is that we're agreeing to. So that additional information, you know, might be helpful. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to move approval of Order 15-5-19-5 in the matter of a warning in contract for medical, dental and mental health services for the Lane County Adult Corrections Division and granting authority to the county administrator to execute the contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seen and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 3-1 with Commissioner Farr excused. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we already took care of Item 8A. So we'll be moving on to Item 8B, which is continued deliberation and possible action on Order 15050511 in the matter of an on-the-record appeal to the Board of Commissioners of a hearings official decision denying a request for home occupation special use permit for an event venue for weddings, retirements, anniversaries, graduations, banquets, family reunions, meetings, dinners, and gatherings within the impacted forest zone lands F2 Zone under Lane Code 16.2113N. It's MAP Township 18, Range 05, Section 0640, Tax Lot 101, and its file number 509PA1405360. And the owner applicant, Andrew Head, and we have Deanna Wright, our associate planner here.
Good morning, Commissioners. There's no staff report or planning director recommendation at this time, however, staff is available for questions during deliberations, should there be any.
Thank you. So I'll turn to the board for deliberations and discussion. Commissioner Stewart?
I guess I'll kick it off. First of all, I want to say thank you for, Deanna, for taking the time to turn that large box of files into a document that we could access on the computer by digitizing it. That was very helpful. I spent three or four hours out Wednesday afternoon reviewing the box and then I think Friday I got the disc and was able to access it. So thank you. That was much easier to do in my office and comfortable home. So I've had lengthy conversations with staff and legal counsel over this and I think, you know, I'm not sure how to start it off, but I guess I will. So before us, we had the appeal. We heard it from a standpoint, from the applicant's side, that there was, I believe, incorrect application of noise and use of the road. And so I'd like to kind of start with at least those two options or items where I've found myself. So first of all, I'd like to talk about the noise. You know, in kind of reviewing what was on the record and discussions with staff, Lane County has noise ordinance. And on the record and in the discussions with staff, that noise ordinance has been applied to all the applications, Lane County noise ordinance to the applications of different, you know, applications for events or different things. And to be consistent, I believe that our noise ordinance should be applied to it and not pull out, you know, pull the DEQ noise ordinance standards and apply them. So I really believe that there was an error in the noise application of the noise criteria. So I start with that. And I think, you know, I'm the type of person that really doesn't like to change the goalpost in the middle of a process. And if the board believes and, and I think that, you know, I would recommend in the end that maybe there should be some items that go to our long-range work plan and see if there's support to be able to, I think we should look at our current noise ordinance. I think we should look at maybe our home occupation, but in light of this process. The second item was the use of the road. And I believe that from a standpoint, because it's a collector road, that our staff, Public Works, said that the, you know, the amount of visits to this facility could be handled by the road. It's driveways direct access off the road. So I think from a use standpoint, that the road can handle the trips to and from the facility. But on the record, I do believe that unnecessarily impact, I do believe that, I don't believe our staff or myself would appreciate that, you know, folks are being dropped off by buses and then the buses are parked along the road until the event's over and then leave. So I think that that, you know, I could see where that type of use is unreasonable for the neighborhood. I also believe that our road wasn't intended to be used for, you know, without, you know, proper signage. I don't believe our road was used for photograph shots, you know, for the wedding. So I think that I could see where that's unreasonable from my standpoint. But I do believe that those items could be addressed by additional criteria in the application. So I think I could get through the first two and then I get down to some of the other things that were brought us concerns from the appellant. And I really have, I spent a lot of time on the structures that were proposed for the use or not proposed but are being used according to the record for this facility. You know, clearly when the applications were made for additional structures, if you go through and look at the application, clearly there's boxes to be met, they're checked that, one specifically, that there's no public going to use these buildings, that there's not going to be, and the box was checked, that there was no additional system, so there wasn't going to be electrical used in the buildings, there wasn't going to be plumbing issues. And then it's clearly stated further down where the signature was by the current applicant, that if there's a change in use or modifications to the structure, that they had to get permits to do that. And I poured through the record the best I could and I couldn't find where there was additional permits for a lot of the uses that are currently being used in those buildings. So I really struggle with the fact that how, because under the home occupation is my understanding, that if you have a legally placed building and it's, and you have the ability to use it for home occupational, but there's a lot of things that exist today. There's buildings that weren't represented in this application that are being used for past events. There's been upgrades to the buildings. There's public using the buildings, but there doesn't appear to be any approval to allow the public to use the buildings. It seems to me like we're going through an application process after somebody already converted or built these structures for something else. And, you know, I don't know if that was the intent when the applications were filed, but I'm concerned that it was pretty clear in the application and signature by the applicant that they understood the criteria for those buildings. So, you know, on that basis, I have a hard time approving the home occupation until those buildings are clearly dealt with for proper permits and proper use. The other thing that I have been concerned with is the fact that this is forest land and activities can't impact. So once again, if I was to go down, how could this potential use of, the home occupational use of this facility not conflict with the forest zone that it has over it? There was no mention in criteria that if we're in high fire danger, that the events wouldn't be curtailed or stopped. I believe that if there's, you know, a Level 4 designation by the Oregon Department of Forestry, that there's not going to be any activities take place on this piece of property, that they should abide by the industry standards for use of the property. There's clearly, you know, some concern in my mind that states that 80% of the activity has to take place within the structure and not out outside. So there's the 80/20 rule. Of course, I've been to quite a few weddings and my life, but it's hard for me to understand, to think about the process of a marriage and reception and everything involved that with the needs to be able to get to the ceremony site and the time it's going to take and the time to move people to the reception site, you know, to get that 80/20 percentage use in the building, I think there's going to be, I don't know, you know, if that's going to be met all the time. I have been to a lot of events where, you know, to focus on potentially the five employees piece, I've been to a lot of catered events in Cottage Grove specifically around Chamber and Community Foundation where there's only two people serving dinner. So, you know, I don't have enough basis to weigh in on whether or not the five employees is something that should draw some concern. So, you know, I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say, but currently right now, I'm not in support of approving the home occupation until they deal with the structures. And I understand that there's this chicken and the egg piece to it, but clearly if I had those structures today and I wanted to start a business and I permitted those structures for a certain purpose and they're not being used for that purpose, I would, I think that there should be a process to show ahead of time. We're being told that we need to approve the home occupation before the billing codes would apply to it. I guess I could see that, but this facility is already up and operating. So, you know, I'm really struggling with how to get to yes to approve this home occupation and reverse the hearings official's decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My thoughts were a little bit more in summary, so I really appreciate Commissioner Stewart's very articulate. So what I don't want to do is continue to repeat and repeat. I thought he laid it out very, very well, kind of where I'm coming from as well. I think that the thing he, Commissioner Stewart mentioned, that I believe that this board will need to do is, I do need, think that we're going to need to address this in a long-range plan. I don't think there's any doubt about that because of the fact that I believe there's going to be more potential venues like this that are going to be, not only coming into Lane County, but I think you're going to see them throughout different parts of the state. And so I think where I'm at as well is, based on our code, I think the hearings official was correct. There are a couple things on the, I'm glad you mentioned on the noise ordinance, the noise piece, I think that's important as well. I just believe overall the county's going to have to address these issues and I'm, you know, what I'm sorry to see is that we're going to have to address this based on an application that came before us, but, or came, at least came before the, our staff and obviously went to the hearings official process. But I think that that's, to me, that's the key piece in this. We can't address this on this particular application process. I don't know what can be done to get to yes. That's the challenge. I think the structure piece is probably the one area I have more heartburn on than any other piece in this whole application. So I would agree that at this point in time, that I would be more inclined to support Option 1. And I feel the same way. I mean, I have prided myself over the years, I've been a small business owner for a long time, going clear back to when I was in my twenties. And the last thing we want to do is feel like that we're not being supportive of those who are coming up with some sort of idea, thought, and opportunity. But right now, we have, we have a code that I think has presented itself to, we have to make some adjustments, but it, yeah, I think even more than that. I think the, even the state, when you look at SB 100, the missing component is that we have the 19 goals of SB 100, there's not a 20 dealing with counties and the way it should be. And I think what happened is when you adopted this in 1973, we had a robust timber industry. We had a robust industry even when it came to mining and this type of thing. So you had these protected classes in place because this was what's driving the economy. Well, here we are in 2015, things have changed. And I don't want to get on here in a soapbox on what needs to be adjusted at the state level, but I believe that there needs to be some additions even at the state level concerning the statewide planning process. But on the local piece, I do believe that, in fact, that's, I think that's something we should maybe hopefully discuss when we come down to future agenda items, is ask the agenda team to maybe take a look at this long-range planning process and how do we work with and even update our code so that there is potential to allow more opportunities like this to happen. But I think based on what we have today, I would say fortunately and unfortunately both, I think the hearings official is correct on what is before us. That's, so, but I don't want to repeat basically some of the same thoughts I had. I thought Commissioner Stewart outlined them pretty well and articulated them very well, but that's where I was coming from. But again, thank you very much for the disc. It sure beats going through a big box. That was, boy, that sure simplified it. And sure appreciate that very, very much. Thank you.
Commissioner Swanson?
I just had a question about the requirement in the home occupation for a maximum of five employees. Could you direct anything, us to anything in the record that discusses or states that there will be fewer, five or fewer employees onsite and whether there was any contested evidence on the point of whether groups of 250 could be serviced by five or fewer employees?
Yes, I think it's in Exhibit 114 and 123. If those were addressed by the applicant, the objection, I wouldn't be able to...
That they could, they could...
That they could.
They could serve 250 people. The applicant stated they could serve 250 people with five or fewer employees.
Right. There was evidence in Exhibit 114. I have the disc here. I could bring it up if you...
Well, I'm only asking if you could recount the evidence on either side, not that you show it to us.
Okay. Yeah, so I think it's in Exhibit 114 and addressed in 123 by the applicant's final rebuttal at the hearings official level. But again, I don't know where, I couldn't pinpoint where the objection evidence would be. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're saying, you know that the applicant presented information that they could in fact meet the standard of 250 guests, five or fewer employees?
Correct.
But you're also adding that you're not aware of anything in the record that says, well, that's kind of ridiculous. You can't really serve 250 people with five or fewer employees. Is there something in the record on that issue?
There is from the objector, but I don't know, I can't recall which exact exhibit it is out of 1,500 pages and...
Yeah. Well, that's why I'm not asking, that's not, I'm not asking you to identify the exhibit. I'm asking you to recount from your knowledge of the record. Did the opposing side say, gee, I don't really think they could do 250? And did they present opinion evidence or maybe from caterers or somebody that said, you know, the standard is, you know, you need one employee there to, for every 10 guests and therefore you probably need 25 people to service a big crowd? And it may well be that one of them is serving them and, as they say in the military, you know, you need nine other people back there doing the work.
Right. So there is evidence in the record to that effect that the objectors did raise that said that it's impossible. We believe that five employees could arrange a 200-person wedding. And they were, did give oral testimony during the hearing two weeks ago, as I recall.
I believe that's right, Commissioner. Most of that, what I heard was anecdotal in nature. Nothing gets really to the sort of evidentiary issues that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Experts, for example, testified.
Now, maybe you can discuss this a little more, Mr. Clark. If the proponent, the applicant is saying, well, okay, our testimony is we can handle a party of 200... a party of 250 people, there will never be more than five employees onsite at any time and we can handle it, we're a lot more efficient than those other guys down the road that need one person for every 10 guests or 25 guests. So, you know, they have their testimony. Legally, are we allowed to make an inference from the testimony of the opponents who say, you know, hey, I've been to a lot of weddings and I've never seen one where they could actually handle that. I'm not in the wedding planning business, but I've been to them before, so in that sense I have some knowledge of the process and it's not fair, it's not reasonable. Or do we have to go all the way to a specific piece of testimony that says, hey, I, you know, I play in a band and I go to weddings all the time and I really know that you can have weddings that are run very well with four people and then we can judge the credibility of that testimony and say, well, it doesn't sound very good to me.
Well, in my sense, I think you can fairly consider all of the evidence that you've heard on that topic. That is, I don't think you necessarily need an expert to come in and say, there's no way to hold a wedding with, for that many people with only five employees. And so all of the sort of things you're discussing, the folks who have come to talk about how unreasonable that is, I think you can consider and it's up to each board member to decide whether that particular criterion has been met. And that, what we're talking about is 211, 2N sub 2 shall employ on the site no more than five full-time or part-time persons if the board does-
Part-time or full-time.
Correct.
So I-
One of the things I think that the applicant did mention and should be considered by the board, two things really. One is that the approval, if there is to be one, could make that obviously a condition of approval and even some sort of monitoring activity could take place to confirm that there's only five employees working at a time. The other pitch I've heard is that, we're talking employees, if the applicant arranged for, you know, a cadre of 20 volunteers and five employees, that would meet the standard as well. But again, it comes down to the commissioner's sense of whether that evidence is reasonable and whether you think they've carried the burden, the applicant has carried the burden to establish that that criterion has been met.
Okay. You know, I think that when you, when the Board of Commissioners is sitting in this role as resolving a contested case of whether or not the planning director's decision and affirmed by the hearings official's decision should be affirmed or not, and we're looking at the narrow issues of the application of our current code to the facts presented, and if we take this gigantic record and we just look at one issue, and that is, under the home occupation provision, it's intended to allow people to run businesses out of their home with minimal intrusion on the neighbors. And it's, the purpose of it is to make sure that we have plenty of economic opportunities for people that can do their work in such a way as it doesn't really affect other people. So, you know, having, you know, one, two, three, four, five part-time employees, even five full-time employees, is deemed by the current code to be acceptable under the home occupation provision. And that's why we have people out there that are architects and people that are out there writing magazine articles and people that are out there knitting things and people that are out there running bookkeeping service. They're doing things, they're contributing to the economy, they're being happy, they're being healthy, they're doing things that we would want them to be doing. They're good, honest, tax-paying citizens, but they're not intruding on the neighbors because they're only driving to and from that house once a day. They're probably having one or two customers come to their house, maybe never in the case of internet businesses, but they're not really, you know, going outside the bounds of the home occupation. And if we look at the facts of this case, and again, we're not looking at all the other millions of things that were argued by both sides, just this home occupation thing, and we go, is this really sounding like that retired schoolteacher that's now painting pictures in their house and then going down to some craft market and selling those paintings once in a while? Is this really like the full-time magazine writer that's, never has anyone come to their home? No, it's not sounding like that at all. It's sounding like a really big commercial enterprise. And whether or not the county is going to allow that kind of thing, or the state's going to allow that kind of thing, it's really outside of the realm of what we're trying to do here. What we're trying to do here is make a decision based upon the facts of this case and the application of the code in this case. So I would just conclude from the information presented on this topic that the application itself that proposes events of 250 people is, cannot be met by the use of the hard work and labor of five full-time or part-time, or a combination of part-time or full-time employees, that they really are not able to meet that standard. And so therefore, the application should be denied.
Thank you. Before I go to Commissioner Lichen, okay, you're good, okay. I've got a few comments and, you know, as I have read the record and even read decisions referred to in the record online, like Green versus Douglas County and some other pertinent legal information, I became more and more aware that I am probably unqualified to make this decision legally and all that. It's extremely technical and looking into legal precedent and all that, I'm not sure I really am qualified to make this judgment. And I lean more heavily towards, you know, Commissioner Sorenson's original impulse was, let's just kick this to the state and be done with it. But I am really happy, I did review the records, did all that reading, because it makes me understand, you know, really clearly some of the things that are missing in our policy right now, things that are missing in state policy, some of the legal precedent that's been set already that I can't change and what the criteria are. One of the things that, you know, the history of the applicant and whether they had non-compliant fires or dug ponds without permits has nothing to do with this application. We have to apply the criteria that are set out in our code to this particular application. So much of what I was reading in the record from neighbors and stuff like that really wasn't germane to the issue. As well as anecdotal evidence is not necessarily germane, you know, to the issue. You know, whether somebody feels or not they can get away with five or less employees, there needs to be really some clear objective proof when the applicant's telling us that's what I'm going to do and I'm willing to condition that in the permit, that I'm willing to have that as a condition of the permit, that I won't have more than five employees there. So it's a really difficult decision for the board. And as I look at this, you know, remaining silent on the hearings official's decision seems to be the easiest way not to have to enter into the legal fray. But I also feel there's a couple of places, like Commissioner Stewart, where maybe the hearings official might have gone too far in one case and didn't go far enough in another. And I sort of get there with the issue of noise and that there isn't a clear and objective standard for noise. The closest thing we have is our current nuisance code, which says if you're over so many DBA at the property line at a certain time of day, you're in violation of our noise ordinance. And that's the only real clear and objective standard anywhere in our code, anywhere, and it's what's been utilized in the past, so there's precedents for using that standard. I don't feel that's good enough in this case to determine unreasonably interfere, but our real problem in this whole thing is there is not a clear and objective standard for unreasonably interfere. And unfortunately, presidents of appeals courts and Luba decisions have been, weddings and events venues qualify as a home occupation right now. There's been actual decisions that say they meet the criteria. I don't agree with that. I don't think anyone, when they originally passed the home occupation standard for these zones at the state level, that forced the county to adopt codes to allow them, thought that people were going to open wedding and events venues as a home occupation. I don't think that was in anybody's mind at all, but because the criteria was written with certain standards and people could prove they met those standards, now there's precedents that they've been approved in the past in other decisions and there's actually appeals court decisions about that, so there now is legal precedents, which I don't, I won't, I'm not an attorney and I didn't sleep in the Holiday Inn last night, so I'm not really qualified to understand exactly what all those presidences are. That's an issue I think we as a board need to work on with state legislation, that there needs to be something pulled out of the home occupation that says, no, weddings and event venues are special use and they need to be permitted as a separate, complete, you know, with public hearings and not a director's decision sort of availability, and divide that out of home occupation. Because, you know, I still can't get how you keep a wedding, you know, within an existing structure with a number of guests coming and going. I mean, even the traffic impact study for this said you need four attendants just to get the cars safely in and out of the site. And so if you got to have four people just directing traffic, those people are out on the site for a considerable amount of time before they ever get into the building, you know? That doesn't seem like it's very well contained. So, you know, I'm, you know, with this particular decision, I'm glad we chose to hear it because it brought to my attention some things we need to deal with locally in our long-range planning work plan, which the planning commission's working on right now, with adopting some clear and objective standards of what's unreasonably interfere in a home occupation. Because that's, part of our problem is we haven't, we don't have a, we don't have a clear and objective standard. And that's a real, that's usually where you fall down in land use cases. If you make a decision that's not based on a clear and objective standard, it's just an invitation for appeal and an overturn and a remand, you know, because you made that decision on a non-objective standard. We need to set up those standards and that's, that's the policy making part of the board and for this particular one, it can be done locally. Dealing with weddings, events, and event venues as a home occupation, well, there's already state precedents on that that says it is, so it's going to actually take legislative action to change that, separate it. Now, it might mean that the current events around, venues around that have been approved get grandfathered because it's hard to look backwards on land use law. It's always forward-looking. But that's the way, and the other thing that has been difficult for me with this particular application is looking at how other venues have been permitted in Lane County and whether they're, this venue is being subjected to a different standard than those venues. That's where I have the issue with the noise ordinance. But we have permitted other venues, but, you know, not always is it an equal case. There's one fairly near my house called Deep Woods. It's in a completely different zone that you can build a church in by rice. What's a church? A weddings and events venue, you know? You can't build a church easily in an F2 zone. So that's, you know, that's, you know, a big difference between those particular venues, but there have been wedding and events venues built in ag and resource land or permitted in Lane County prior to this. So it's difficult to suddenly change that and in other jurisdictions like Douglas County and the Hesters and the Green case. So I'm glad we heard this, but I'm terribly uncomfortable as a commissioner and not an attorney or judge or hearings official, making a firm, an affirmative decision one way or another on this. I'm a little bit uncomfortable though, remaining silent on the hearings official's decision because I think, I believe he missed the boat on the building. I think it's fairly clear in the record that the building was proposed and the applicant signed it based on the fact that it was going to be for chickens and rabbits. And it was never occupied for that use, was clearly advertised prior to it even being completed as an event center and therefore was not an existing building and the code is very clear, you cannot build a new building for a home occupation. And I think that should have been cited in the denial. So I am leaning towards, you know, somehow or another, and I'm not, and I'm going to look towards counsel about this, an option where the board passes this on to Luba but strikes the hearings official's denial on noise, adds a denial on the fact that the existing, the building was not existing and therefore is not a legal place to have a home occupation and adds that and findings to that fact. Whether we can do that or not, it's either that or we just remain silent on this and one of the appellances raised that issue about the existing building and they can deal with that at the Luba level. So I'm kind of looking towards counsel about.
Yeah, you can craft your decision really any way you want. If you want to pick and choose through the hearings official's decision to agree with certain conclusions he's made and disagree with others, that's fine, we'll just reflect that in the order and the findings that go with it. The thing I'll note, and I think your focus is accurate, Chair Bozovich, in that with respect to the building, the question really is whether it was existing before this home occupation. I'll note, as the hearings official does, that in general, the home occupation, that particular use is going to be inconsistent with the intended use of the building. In other words, an agricultural building, you know, the home occupation is not going to be consistent with that use. So really the focus of the code isn't on maintaining the agricultural use of the building, it's whether it was initially set up as such. And once it is, the fact that the home occupation use may be distinct from that isn't necessarily defeating in terms of meeting that standard. So it really comes down to whether it was an existing ag building before this began and I guess reasonable minds can differ on that.
I tried to build a timeline of when he applied for the ag building, when some of the records showed that he was actually advertising and when some of the completion, you know, on permits were shown. It's very difficult because it is an ag building, it's actually exempt from permits, so there's no final occupancy that comes about, so there's no clear completion date for the ag building. So it's a very difficult record to build in some ways to say that. So it, I may, you know, just err on the side of caution, say I'll let Luba deal with that with the lamb watches portion of the appeal that does mention whether the building was an existing building or not. So I'll look to some of the rest of the commission and where they're leaning towards, so.
Thanks, Commissioner Stewart. So I appreciate the discussion with my colleagues and obviously the time that we've all spent in trying to review this and do our due diligence. I guess I'm, you know, similar to, I'm not prepared to write a bunch of findings, but I am concerned and I don't know that, you know, I guess Luba can set precedents and change the way we're doing our process. I mean, I guess that's the way the law, you know, the process works, but I've just been concerned that we've applied criteria over time, we've applied our noise ordinance criteria to applications of approval. Seems to me like at a minimum, you know, I would want to, to support our process. If Luba tells us that our process is not correct and that we should be applying the DEQ standards in this fashion, I would appreciate that instead of just remaining silent and letting them do that. So, I mean, once again, I guess the easy way to do it is to choose option one or two and let Luba- two and let Luba go through it, but I, I am concerned that I think that there should be some, some inclusion into the findings that, you know, shows that this is the way we've applied our noise ordinance in our, our two applications over time, we're being consistent with that. I feel like maybe the hearings official didn't, didn't rule correctly in that. And as was stated, I think that unreasonable interference, I mean, I appreciate the applicant's attorney saying that the past is the past, but we're supposed to, you know, judge criteria based on the findings, and that's clearly that there's, in my mind, some unreasonable interference with the road use, so I would tend to agree on the standpoint that the unreasonable interference, not necessarily the road being able to supply, you know, to handle the additional trips because of its structure. Certainly I agree with the conversation that Commissioner Bozovich had talked about with the ag building component. I just disagree with the fact that there was nothing on the record, I mean, the applicant's attorney stated that she was standing in the barn when there was cows there, but yet I couldn't find any proof that there was cows on the property he submitted in the application, so I questioned whether or not that was actually the case, to get me to the point where we're, where, yes, they can use this for a completely different use, as the attorney stated. So should that be a finding that should be included to the, the use of the building? I still come back to the 80/20 rule. I'm not too sure that the 80/20 rule can be met with this application, if 80% of the activity, I mean, the application shows the one lower building, I didn't see where the application talked about using the upper supposed barn that appears to be being used for other uses. So if 80% of the activities that take place inside that one structure, I, you know, as was discussed, does that include parking, does that include, you know, moving to the ceremony site, coming back from the ceremony site, there were structures that were talked about that were going to house gifts and different things that was talked about in the application some, but was unclear which buildings they were, so I think that there should be some findings about the types of structures, but, you know, my colleagues are, are in a different position, I guess we could just let, I mean, I'm at the point where I agree denial is the correct decision at this point, I just am struggling, as you can hear, as to should there be some additional findings added to it.
Any other comments, Commissioner Sorenson?
I think that, you know, one way to handle this is to, you know, have Mr. Clark write something up that he thinks fairly interprets what the commissioners have said, you know, I, just for myself, I think that the applicant has not met the burden of proof on the issue of the number of employees needed to do this, and, and that that would in fact violate the home occupation rule. I think the application fails for the reason that the noise impacts unreasonably interfere with the existing community and existing property rights of the neighbors. Same thing for the traffic, I'm not sure what the standard is there, but it's, if it's unreasonable to interfere, I think it meets that, the application fails on that basis. So those are a couple, from my point of view, that somewhat match the views of, of the other three commissioners.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And, you know, it's, it's, I think kind of a telling sign is, is how complicated this has become, and probably so much more than what it should be. And so I, while I, I do appreciate Commissioner Stewart's clearly trying to get to some sort of yes somewhere along the lines, but I'm not sure we can. I mean, that's, this is the challenge I have, is that when you look through, and especially with the structure piece, I do agree on, on taking a look at the noise ordinance, I do, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, and so I don't think you can just blanket say, hey, we're, here we're, you know, going with the hearings official, send it to Luba and we're done. I, I think there's some, some areas that, on this, that potentially could, from a finding standpoint, could, could be addressed. I, I don't know, I, I think what's happened here is that this has become, I'm listening to Commissioner Stewart, and trying to go through and go through, and, and it's, what it's realizing to me is how complicated this is and where it shouldn't be. And the, the home occupancy piece is, and Commissioner Bozovich is right on, I mean, there's, there's got to be something addressed here, because one of the things I mentioned last time is, especially if you have an event of 250 people, and if there's alcohol served, you're going to need more than one or two security. In fact, there, there is, it's generally suggested that security, if you have 250, even 50 to 250, you probably need anywhere from two to as many as seven, just on security alone. And so these are some things that I, that I think overall we need to address, but can't address here on this particular application, that we need to figure out or address, or work with the, our partners in the legislature on addressing this going forward, because as I stated before, I believe you're, we're going to see more of these, and, and if we don't start down that road, there's going to be a lot of heartache. And the last thing we need is for Lane County to be known as, you're the county that just doesn't want any sort of business. I mean, we're trying to break that cycle, I felt like that at times, people had thought that, but we've been trying to break that cycle, so we're going to have to address that, we just can't address it here. This is, I think this is the challenge we have, is we have this particular application, and part of us wants to start talking about what we can address for things in the future, but it doesn't apply here. And so these are, these are some, I, I think these are the issues that are somewhat complicated. There's a part of me that, that just says, you know what, I'll pull the hearings official, send it off and be done with it, hands, you know, wash our hands with it. But I'm not sure we can do that either, so I, I, the structure piece, though, yeah, I mean, when you read through that, it doesn't look like that's really been, we've been, you know, lots of chickens and, you know, moving cattle through there, so I, I just, so those are some areas that I think are, are, have been troubling to me from the get-go, was, was part of that. But I think the home occupancy thing, issue, and that's where Commissioner Bozovich brought that up, that's a, that's a larger conversation that we're going to have, but I believe that has to go, we're going to have to discuss that as part of our long-range plan, that I believe we will have to address that and start working on our, with our partners to get that addressed. Because I, I, right now, the challenge is, more of these that come, based on what we have in place, we're going to be denying, 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 and I don't think we want to be in that position. I feel like I'm talking around in circles on this, but in a sense, I think because this application has been somewhat complicated, and probably more complicated than it should be, in a sense, that's what I feel like I'm doing, and I, and I wish I wasn't.
Welcome to the world of land use.
No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, so I, some of my feelings on this, and, and, yes, it's, we have a tendency to kind of look, you know, one of the reasons we brought this in front of the board was we thought it had countywide implications, and it's obvious from the discussion here it does, that there is that issue of, of clear and objective standards that we're missing, and a few other things. It's even got statewide implications, I mean, talking with Commissioner Lindsay in Lynn County, they had a Filbert boarding building that was constructed as an ag building that had a 20-foot fireplace hearth in it and wet bar, that was obviously built for a similar thing, and they're dealing with the exact same home occupation in ag resource land in Lynn County that we're dealing with here, and, and a permit issue. So there does need to be some statewide issues on this, there needs to be some county issues on this, but when we come to this particular application, it sounds to me, listening to Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Sorenson, that the board does not agree entirely with the hearings official's decision, other than the denial. That, that I'm hearing consistently, that there is, that the board members all agree that the, the application should have been denied, which leads me to believe that probably the best option for the board, rather than trying to write new findings, delay this any longer, and even have those findings challenged and, and further complicate this process, is to adopt the hearings official's decision as, as the final decision, remaining silent. That means we're not agreeing with his noise ordinance issues, and we're not agreeing with the fact that he failed to address the building in the 80/20 or the five employees. I mean, I have a real issue with some of this, because all of it's based on, you know, the fact that he didn't adopt those was based on the agreement of the applicant to a condition saying, I'm not going to violate that, we only have one staff person for the entire county when it comes to zoning enforcement. Most of these events are going to occur on weekends and evenings when that person's not even on duty. So, you know, once we turn this thing loose, you know, where's the enforcement come from? So it, it's aggravating, you know, to think about this and, and, and the implications of it, but the more I think about where we ought to be legally in this situation is, you know, basically moving to affirm and adopt the hearings official's decision to deny, but remaining silent on the actual decision and the interpretation of the rural comprehensive plan, because I think that allows for, no, we didn't agree with noise, and he should have brought up this issue, because remaining silent is remaining silent. So it's an option that would not require staff to come up with a bunch of new findings and try and interpret the will of the board, and then we'll have to do a couple meetings back and forth to make sure the findings meet our intent. I don't know how quickly we can do that, we are still, you know, we got a, how much of a waiver are we on, the 150-day? Right now, they, I think the applicant agreed for us to go to like June 2nd.
June 2nd, yep.
So I'm not sure we can, you know, we only, we don't have another meeting until June 2nd, so if staff doesn't get it exactly right on the findings between now and then, we're out of options timewise. And if we end up in circuit court under a mandamus procedure, the applicant no longer has the burden of proof to prove that he has, he can do it with five employees. At that point, we have the burden of proof of why we can't issue the permit. I've been through, you know, my previous lifetime, I used to do a lot of land use stuff as a civil engineer, working for developers, I've been in mandamus proceedings and testified as a professional witness, it is not good for the agency. It throws, it completely shifts, the, the burden of proof becomes the agency as to why you can't issue the permit versus the applicant having to say how, the burden of proof that he meets the criteria to get a permit. And it, it's not where we want to be, so we, we have this timeline hanging over our head, because applicants have a right to, you know, some process ending at some time, we just can't go on forever, so I'm going to recommend to the board that, that we take option two and move to affirm and adopt the hearings official's decision and remain silent on, on the interpretations. But I'll, I'll look to the rest for further discussion. Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you for that conversation, so I do, I want to ask our legal counsel, does that sound appropriate if we remain silent? Does it, does it meet potentially some of the concerns that we've been talking about here, leaves them open?
Depends what those concerns are. I, well, no, before I forget, which is a little aside from your question, the issue of the number of employees, we talked about it, and I, in response to Commissioner Sorenson's question, mentioned that I think the applicant had suggested doing a condition of approval for part of that satisfaction, or to satisfy, as well as monitoring, I don't know about monitoring for sure, but it occurred to me as I'm thinking here, that doing a condition where you're promising to do what the code requires you to do anyway, doesn't make sense. In other words, you have to find that the criterion's been met in the first instance, not as a matter of conditioning approval of it, so that is to wrap it up, to say that the board needs to convince itself that this can be done with five. But anyway, to your question, it, simply remaining silent doesn't deal with, I think, some of the members of the board's concern about how the noise ordinance was used or not used, and I heard a little bit of difference opinion between Commissioner Sorenson, for example, and, and yourself, Commissioner Stewart, about whether it's appropriate to use some other standard other than just the straight noise standard. And so remaining silent, I guess, leaves the county's position as being, the hearings officials, you're not adopting it as your own, but, but the county decision is the hearings official, which is applying a standard more than just a noise ordinance, it's more of a, a subjective standard of is this unreasonable in this community? And, and I understand Commissioner Bozovich, your concern about objective, clear and objective standards, I don't know that you're going to get that here, I'm not sure the legislature's ever going to get you to a point where these home occupations, where, when they're starting with the, with the wording of, is it unreasonably, does it unreasonably interfere with the neighborhood? That's always going to be a subjective standard, and it's always going to be for hearings officials, boards of permission, whomever, to sort of weigh the evidence back and forth and decide, is it unreasonable or not? And that's the nature of that sort of decision-making. But as I say, the, the hearings official used that more nebulous standard than something more clear and objective, such as a noise ordinance. The fact that that was the basis, part of the basis of his decision, and, and doesn't necessarily mean the board is tied to that next time through, I would suggest that to the, you know, the board doesn't want to be inconsistent in how it employs that either, decide you want to go with, the noise standard is the one and only criteria we're going to use to discern whether it's unreasonably, unreasonable noise or not. We can do that as part of legislating locally, if you want to, on, on that particular issue, but you're not, I guess you're not tied necessarily to one way or another by agreeing with the hearings official's decision here, or at least remaining silent on it, as terms of the noise issues. The, as I understand, there's four issues are really that you're wrestling with, and one is whether the additional traffic will be unreasonable interference, and the hearings official found that it would, the noise was another one he found would be unreasonably interfering. He didn't agree, I think, with where this board is going with respect to the number of employees, he seemed to be fine, I think he was skeptical, as were a number of the opponents, that you could run a wedding of that size with only five employees, but he sort of left it essentially to the enforcement arm, I think, of the county to say, you know, we'll take the applicant at its word and check on it later. That may or may not be sufficient for this board to live with. If, if you want to, I guess what I'm suggesting is if you want to establish this county's position on those specific issues going forward, you know, then you wouldn't necessarily remain silent on the hearings official's decision, unless the idea was leave this as it is and address those things in more of a legislative fashion, rather than in this judicial fashion that, that you mentioned, Commissioner Bozovich. So I'm not sure if that answers the question, Commissioner Stewart, but.
Not really.
If there's more specific questions, I'd be happy to address it.
So I don't, I don't think we're going to get to crafting findings. I believe that Tom Bean's, both the-
Um, so I, I believe that, um, beans, both the applicant and the appellate, um, have appealed this. Um, one requested to go to Luba, so they'll, I would assume, you know, going to be able to make their, their case before Luba, um, about these specific things that we're wrestling with. I believe if we remain silent, that those some are going to be represented to Luba. So I guess at this point, I'm going to attempt to make a motion.
Okay.
And that, um, I make a motion that we move option two to deny the application, or, excuse me, move option two to affirm and adopt the Lane County hearings official decision dated March 2nd, 2015, as the county's final decision and to remain silent, and the hearings officials' interpretations of the rural comprehensive plan policies and implementing ordinances made by the hearing official, and the decision and direct staff to prepare an order with the appropriate findings for the final decision in the application, um, number, I guess, PA 14-05360. Andrew Hadden.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second, is there any discussion to the motion? So I'd just like to mention that we did have the option to make the same motion, but affirm the hearings official's decision, so Luba knows that. So passing it on remaining silent is a clear indication to Luba that we don't exactly affirm the decision.
I expressly agree.
Yeah, expressly agree, is actually what, what, the way it words, is worded. So they know the two options that we have as a board, so remaining silent is a statement to the, to Luba in, in quite a way. Also, um, you know, we also are aware of the two appellants, you know, that both the applicant and, and Land Watch, and what issues they brought up as assignments of error in their appeals, and we're aware that, that the issues we're mentioning up here, number of employees, the existing building, and all noise on both sides of the argument, were part of, both, part of those appeals and will be argued in front of Luba. So that, you know, there, there will be the opportunity, you know, at that time, based on the record, for folks to, to make those arguments if we pass this. Commissioner Sorenson?
Thank you very much. I'm going to be voting in favor of this motion, and, you know, um, one of the things that, that strikes me as being a really important part of both the hearings official decision, I mean, the department director's decision and the hearings official's decision in our approval of the, of the process and, and the denial of the, uh, application, is at a certain simple level, our, our job is to either approve the application or deny the application. And in the specific instance of the, uh, Lane County ordinance that deals with, uh, home occupation, uh, we've had a policy for a number of years that, um, five or fewer part-time or full-time employees is the dividing line between what is allowed in a home occupation and what is not. There are plenty of others too, but that's one of the big ones. And so the reason this application fails is, um, that the, the applicant has failed to demonstrate. It's the applicant's burden to apply for the permit and to prove all the things in the permit, and the applicant, in my opinion, has failed to, um, submit appropriate evidence and appropriate information that would justify a contrary decision from the one that we're reaching today, namely that, no, they haven't submitted appropriate information to justify that they comply with the five or fewer employees, and any number of, of issues were discussed among the commissioners today, the number of people who take to park all these vehicles probably would be close to one or two. Number of people to patrol alcohol use at the facility, probably at least one or two. Number of people to serve the people at the place, at least one or two. Well, now we're above five. And so to me, um, it, it's reasonable for us to say the applicant hasn't demonstrated how they could meet that. And, and this is not a policy decision of the board of commissioners, we're not making a new law, we're not making a new set of rules about whether we want more or fewer, um, events within home occupation or outside of home occupation. We're not making any policy decision to say we need more of these events, or we need fewer of these events. We're making a very narrow decision to say the hearing, the department director and the hearing, and the hearings official denied the application, and we're denying the application. So we don't need to, you know, go into some great catharsis over what our role is here. It's, it's, it's either to vote yes or no. And I think that the, the complexity of it is, is introduced by our speculation about whether, um, we should have a different rule, and whether we should have more, uh, outdoor venues in this beautiful county that we're lucky enough to live in, that people want to get married in, divorced in, buried in, celebrated in, or whatever, all the different gatherings we have. So to me, um, uh, the, the issues down the road of whether we're going to look at our code, whether we're going to have more, fewer, whether we're going to have a more easily-understood noise ordinance or not, uh, I'm able to make a finding here, if necessary, that, you know, 250 people outdoors in, at an event for home occupation is going to probably result in an unreasonable interference in noise to the neighbors. It's not, to me, it's not all that complicated, but I get it that some people might want to have a hard and fast rule, like five, which we have for home occupation. So that's, that's my conclusion.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, this is an ordinance?
No.
So it's an order, so just a straight vote? So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0. And Mr. Clark, before you leave, I have one more question.
Yep.
So now the process moves on to Luba on appeal. Is Lane County allowed to participate in that process, um, to make arguments around any of the, the items under appeal?
Yes.
Or are we solely there to defend, or to, to deal with the director's, the hearings official's decision?
Well, we would be, the county could appear to defend its decision. At this point, um, the applicant, if they, he wishes to, would appeal to the county's decision to Luba, and we would be the named respondent in that. The county at that time can make the decision whether it wants to participate actively or not. If that appeal happens, I'm assuming that Land Watch would attempt to intervene, which they would be allowed to do, I'm sure, um, and would argue in opposition to the applicant. So, um, but in terms of the county's role, we can decide whether to participate or not, and we can even choose to brief certain issues and not others. It would be, I haven't contemplated whether I could make an argument, um, that is inconsistent with the board's decision. In other words, arguing against what the hearings official, you know, arguing that the hearing, that the hearings official should have found this condition to have been satisfied, for example, the noise ordinance piece. So I think it would really just be a straightforward, um, do we participate or not? If, if it's the board's decision, when we discuss it, if we do, um, that we only weigh in on particular issues, that's fine, that's easy to do.
I'm certain before it's scheduled with Luba, that we'll be hearing from legal counsel in executive session, and we may be able to provide, you may be, at that time, we'll have more clear answers, and we may be able to provide some direction then.
Yeah.
So, well, thank you.
And I would anticipate we would be back in two weeks with an order and findings for, so we'd have a written decision, and that, that starts the 21-day appeal period, so.
Right.
A couple more weeks left.
Right. Thank you, and thank you for staff's time and all that. Commissioner Sorenson?
I just wanted to comment on that, or ask a question about the timing, because if you do that and there is a, um, there's a, there's an agreement, I understand, to extend the time, so that, this falls within that agreement?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're able to meet our obligations under that agreement?
That's right. The agreement was till June 2nd, and that's the next board meeting, we would be back with an order.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I really appreciate staff's work on this, and it's above and beyond the normal application, I'm sure. And I also want to appreciate the board's work on this, that there's a lot of reading, and it sounds like there's been a lot of reading done by the board. So moving on, um, to county council, I know we have need for an exec, short, a brief executive session today. Do you know if there are any other announcements from county council?
Uh, none at all.
Thank you. On to commissioners' business announcements, any announcements from commissioners? Then we'll move on to agenda team requests. And I, Commissioner, like and?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, and based on this prior conversation, I would just request that, uh, and I know it's going to take some time, but based on, Commissioner Stewart brought it up originally, and that was, maybe we start down this, uh, process on taking a look at, uh, event, venues, events, this type of thing through our long-range plan. I don't even know how to explain it, that's the best I'm going to be able to explain it and summarize. I'm just glad Commissioner Stewart's on the agenda team currently, so. But, um, I, I think it makes sense, because I, I do believe we're going to, this is not the, this isn't the last one we're going to see. I believe more will be coming to us, and if there's things that we feel like we need to change from our standpoint, from our code, I think it's worth having a, having a look at it, so I'm just looking for the head nods there.
And I presume that we have three head nods, I, I'll agree to that. It looks like I've.
I agree.
It looks like we have four head nods on that one, so that'll be a future agenda item to look at. I was going to ask for some head nods to hear from legal counsel, and this may have to be an exec session, because it may be about, um, proposed litigation relative to our, uh, rights we reserved in passing our ordinances on, on sick leave, and the, and the City of Eugene's desire to move forward with local implementation of their ordinance that was passed after our ordinances. So if I have three head nods, we'll schedule that for an exec session, once we can get some research done. I'm kind of hoping that the legislature will act, and we won't really have to deal with this, but I think we need to be prepared, because the July 1 implementation date's coming, and, and from today's newspaper, the city is planning on an implementation if the legislature fails to act. Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the conversation. I, I think it would be good to get our, Mr. Kyler to give us an update on status for Ms. Chinskey, um, as to where it is, the steps that it.
That would be open session.
That that would take, and then, um, you know, I'm not sure that we need to spend a lot of time on it until it gets a little bit closer. It's my understanding that, um, there's really no legal action that can be taken until actually somebody gets fined for it, so, um, and that's my understanding with the rollout of the sick leave, it's going to take time, so I think that, and this was all information that was given to us, I think, last year when we had this discussion, so I think maybe at most, the agenda team should just confirm that that's realistic and make sure that we don't need, need to include it at this, or have a special session at this time.
Sounds like a logical plan, so is there three head nods to have a report back from our legislative folks?
Yep.
Looks like we got four. So, thank you, I think that was good clarification. Um, and I will remind folks that the agenda team put off a resolution dealing with the Second Amendment into June, and that will be coming back on June 2nd, most likely, so you'll be seeing that in your packet. Any other agenda team requests? Review of assignments?
Uh, so the last two, I heard a request for a work session on special occasion home use provisions in our long-range plan, something to that effect. Uh, and so we'll bring that forward, I didn't hear a timeline, but maybe we can bring that forward in, in July, later in June or in July. And then we do have an update scheduled on June 2nd, a legislative, uh, update is already scheduled for the board on June 2nd, so we can have Mr. Kyler and Ms. Chinskey providing an update on sick leave at that time. I think that's, well, that's the next board meeting we have available, and probably a good time to provide that update. And then finally, we'll report back on, with a six-month update on the audit from the contract that was approved for the board for medical, dental, mental health services in the jail. Those are the three things that I heard for, for follow-up.
Any other follow-up items that you missed? See none? Any other business for the board before I read us into executive session? There's no other business, we'll enter an executive session, and most likely adjourn out of executive session unless we need to come out to make a decision should the need arise. I will remind folks, we have a work session tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, and that'll be in, up in the Board of Commissioners conference room, and that'll be on, uh, our mental health system, and should be an interesting work session. And then we have our Budget Committee public hearing on Thursday at 5:30, and that's when public can come in and talk to us about what they'd like to see in the budget and their input, so it's an opportunity for public comment, and that'll be here in Harris Hall, 5:30 Thursday evening. So with that, the Board of County Commissioners will meet an executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, so we will reserve the right to come back into public session should the needs, need arise. I'm not anticipating that, so I'm, I will now recess us into executive session.